Good evening and welcome to the January 10th budget meeting of the council. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay in getting here. Paul, did you want to start with anything?
If I may, I'd like to kick off the budget season. In years past, we have done a lot of the work like we've done in years past with health insurance, all union contract raises that are eligible for union contract raises, all employees there. Just want to let you know that non-union, there's no raise built into the budget right now for non-union. That usually comes a little bit later. All gas pricing, general insurance, short-term disability, a lot of the costs associated with personnel services throughout the town has been calculated by finance. The departments can come and give their suggestions if they need additional staffing. But if there's specific questions about salaries and things of that sort, that finance has computed those. In addition, finance has done all electricity, all natural gas. We have long-term contracts for those two items in the budget. So those have been calculated by historical three-to-five-year historical usage rates versus the current rate that we have. So those have been calculated in any GMRs there. I do want to say that, once again, health insurance GMR was over 20% this year, which is a big cost. You'll see that in a lot of departments, fire, police, especially in those two which have a lot of employees. Their health insurance really went up significantly in those areas. But we're here, the departments will be coming in over the next week. One, we start tonight, and then we have next Wednesday and Thursday for the final budget hearings. And the department will be here to answer all questions. We'll have our individuals such as MYA, if they want to come and speak to their budget with the council, they can. And adult John O'Leary, adult community center, if they want to speak, they can. So it's definitely an opportunity to talk and to listen. One thing I do want to say is that I've been informed that we are going to get two additional warrant articles from the public. One is the MYA for athletic fields. The other one, if they get the signatures, they will, they only need 25 now, signatures for this. But if they get the signatures, to break the town of Merrimack into two voting wards or three voting wards. There's been a lot of talk with that, and we'll see if that, but those are the two that I've heard to come through. The dates I do want to give, if you have a petition warrant article, you would need to have that into the town manager's office by Tuesday, February 13th, by 5:00 p.m. If you're planning on doing a petition bond article, you need to have that into the town manager's office by Friday, February 9th, by 5:00 p.m. So those are two important dates. We have to talk about ratifications for union contracts, and they have to all be ratified by the town council and the union by February 13th, Tuesday, February 13th. So that's another day. And then in looking at the February schedule for the town council, we have a town council meeting on the 8th of February. We have to statutorily hold the public hearing for the budget on February 15th. So I am suggesting that we have the two meetings in February, one on the 8th and one on the 15th for town council. And we'd cancel the February 22nd town council meeting and have, like I said, we'll move that up to the 15th. So we'll have regularly scheduled council meetings on the 8th and 15th for the month of February. Not right now because this is only a budget workshop. Tomorrow night, tomorrow night, we should definitely discuss it, and I'll bring it up again in the town manager report about the February meetings. And we can go from there with a vote then or a motion to change our schedule, your schedule. Like I said, we're here to answer any questions. The budget overall, once again, is about 45 cent increase over the current projections. And like I said, we're here to answer your questions. And I have assessing up first, if you want to go to O2, which is assessing. It's the second tab. And basically, once again, their budget is pretty much, and health insurance went up $11,000, and that's the biggest significant cost. The overall budget went up around $21,000. Capital reserve fund went up, and we'll talk about capital reserves differently. But in this budget, the $21,000 includes about $2,700 for increasing capital reserves for our revaluation. Pretty much flat-line budget except for a little bit of health insurance. All right. Move on. Diane and Brenda are here to talk about town clerk tax collector. While they're here, I just want to bring up while they're walking up here is that in general government, there is, in the election line item, there's $80,000 in that election line item for new voting machines. And we'll be discussing that further in the general government. But if anybody has a specific question about the voting machines or of that nature, Diane will give you basically the same information I'll give you is that there's no new information from the last time. The state's still testing out, still testing two vendors. One's a New Hampshire vendor, one's a vendor probably in the middle of the country someplace, and they haven't made a determination on that. You can purchase them at your own risk. The machines we have now are still certified, you can still use them. Just if the mechanism breaks, if they don't have the parts, they can't fix them. So we're just in a holding pattern to buy new voting machines. And we're estimating that to be about $80,000, but we can talk a little bit more. But if you had a specific questions on that, Diane, like I said, she doesn't have much more information than that. But she's the expert in elections, so.
Did you want to speak to your budget before we have any questions?
Diane is 24.
Yes, sorry about that.
Sure, we can do that. With me is Brenda Doolong, deputy. Should be on, can you hear me now? Better? Okay, so with me is Brenda Doolong, the deputy town clerk tax collector. We have gone through the budget, and as most of our budgets in years past, it's another flat-lined budget. The bulk of the budget, about 85% is personnel services. Those costs did go up this year. The operating cost account for about 15% of our budget, and our increase in operating cost was $1,720. We increased our printing line item, account 8220 by $1,000, just to cover cost increases that we're seeing with our billing forms and envelopes and things of that nature. Under general insurance, the 8280 account, that's an uncontrollable number. That comes from the numbers that finance gets for our insurances, that went up $359. And under account 8334, there was an increase of $361 for our software support contracts.
Are those contracts with the vendor or with a third party?
With the vendor, yes.
With the vendor themselves?
Yep.
The voting machines are under general government, right? I'll wait till then. Yeah, I'm just curious. I know they've not chosen one, but will there be, like the system we have now because it has the paper copy, are we still going to be, is the state leaning that way? Will it be a hard paper copy?
Absolutely, absolutely. A paper trail is just so important in our elections that all, that's one of the criterias, absolutely. So both machines that the state has approved are paper. They have backup and everything that we pretty much have now. They just have enhanced, some enhanced features such as you can look at like the write-ins, how we do them now, where we're physically touching ballots, they have screens and things where you can view them and people can see them. And there's just a few different processes, but you'll all get an opportunity to see the machines. There are different workshops that have been held with different communities where they're demoing and looking at them as well. I understand the state has approved use of them after this presidential primary for communities that do want to purchase new machines now. The concern that I have is the machines have to be certified by the federal government as well. And they have until, I believe they have a deadline of 2026 to have that approved. But I believe they're going to try and certify that a lot quicker, but that's their deadline. So my concern is buying them now before we have that final approval. It's an awful lot of money to buy, and I know other communities are jumping on the wagon, but I'm just, I'm a diehard, very conservative person. And when it comes to money, my husband will tell you it's hard to get a couple nickels out of it. That's my concern with getting them now. But I think they are very much going to want to push this forward just because of the situations that we're in and the importance of our elections being perceived as secure by the public.
Right.
Which, you know, we know they are, but we want that perception as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Diane. Nancy?
The only other comment I'd make regarding that is I never like to be one of the first ones in anything new. All the other towns can iron out all of the kinks before we purchase them. I agree with your decision is my point.
And I second your comment.
So what's your concern about the current machines holding up for another two or three years or whatever it takes to get to the point where we're replacing?
I'm not sure if we're going to want to go quite that far out, but within the next year or two, I think that will be okay. Three years may be pushing it, but by then I think we should have some definitive answers.
Okay, so you're comfortable at this point?
I'm comfortable at this point, keeping where we are, but I definitely would recommend as soon as there's a decision, you know, we do want to be planning and moving forward for that because it is something. We have had machines go down in our elections. We have nine machines, three for each precinct. So we fortunately have a couple of additional machines. If we had to, they accept all ballots, it would make the workload a little bit more tedious throughout the day and the evening. But again, they are aging, and it is a concern. But these machines are still going to be serviced for at least the next year. They're not under contract or anything, but if something happens, they're going to do what they can to get us the parts that we need. Can't guarantee it, but you know, it's a best effort at this point.
Yeah, on 8136, line 72, other. I've got some wacky things in there. It comes up as REF. It looks like the formula didn't take.
Yep, there was, there was two lines, used to be two lines underneath the part-time 8107. The bottom line number, I believe, of $86 when you look at it for unemployment, $86 is accurate. I noted that in the budget book, in the Excel spreadsheet, and we'll get that fixed. But the number of $86 is the accurate number for unemployment compensation for the department.
Does anybody have anything further? No? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have media, number 32, Nicholas.
And I want to say, just remind the people at home that Nicholas's budget is offset by the fee that people pay for, on the Comcast bill. And that comes back, and Nicholas's budget is used. That's how we pay for Nicholas's budget is through that fee for media. And Nicholas, as most of you know, does a great job of getting the school involved and school productions and individuals that come out here and taping meetings and making sure of social media and making sure that the word gets out there and that our meetings are on the web. And anybody from anywhere in the country or even Aruba can watch our meetings online. So I just want to, you know, call that out for Nicholas, that he does a great job. And we really have stepped, he has really, not we, I just take credit for it. But he has really stepped up his game to get the word out there so that people are informed in the town of Merrimack. Even though they might not have Comcast, they can still watch a meeting and know what's going on. So Nicholas, we'll be here to present his budget.
Please download the Merrimack TV app across all of your devices if you haven't already. Thank you. Like Paul said, I'm the town's media services coordinator. Celebrated my 19th year here this past year. And Justin, our assistant media services coordinator, reached his 10th year this year. So the two of us, and also Grace has been here about six months now. And, but Justin, the three of us are very passionate about what we do. We believe in community media. And we're grateful to serve Merrimack residents for sure. Between, my budget is essentially, the bottom line is similar to last year. There's two, there's an increase, and that's relative to one of our expenditures that we're hoping to see happen in our equipment item. And it has to do with low-power FM radio. I was here in September and discussed the idea of bringing low-power FM to Merrimack and how it had been on our CIP for, I think, 12 of the years that I've been here. But it's always been pushed around because we were always at the mercy of the FCC's filing period window that they sort of just, I don't know, they throw spaghetti at the wall or throw a dart at a calendar, I should say, and pick a date. And that date was approaching. It was announced over the summer. And the filing period was opening in November. But serendipitously, we had an opportunity to have a request to file, or file a application to transfer a low-power FM frequency from the town of this elementary school district to the town of Merrimack. And the council went ahead and approved that filing and spending some of our money in this year's budget to make that happen with some equipment. Happy to say that as of today, one of the two applications have been approved. So we do have the approval to move the antenna, the station essentially, to Merrimack's town hall here. And we're just waiting on the approval of our license, which I'm optimistic, more than optimistic, that that will happen given that they've approved the move of the station itself. So with that said, we are going to bring low-power FM radio to Merrimack this current fiscal year to the town hall here. But the, and we mentioned this at the September meeting, the range won't be town-wide when we first bring it here. It will be a third of the town, maybe, or I should say half the town, maybe a third to a half the town will be able to hear it on the FM dial. We are going to also stream the radio station, so every and anyone will be able to hear the station regardless of an FM antenna. But we really want low-power FM to be town-wide. Bedford and Manchester has had great success with their low-power FM station there town-wide. In fact, you can actually pick up Bedford Radio here in Merrimack, and I recommend checking it out. They do a fantastic job there. And we, just like Bedford and Manchester, it's based on public safety. So this radio station, although, will play content 24/7, music, simulcast or sports coverage and that sort of thing. The, one of the reasons why the FCC allows government entities to have low-power FM is for public safety reasons. I have the vocal support of the police chief and fire chief, which is fantastic. And we want them to be a big part of this Merrimack radio. So in the first, the increase in one of our budgets has to do with our dues, dues and fees. So there's an increase there from $3,500 to $7,000. And that's relative to any dues and fees that we may, some new dues and fees that we may incur from low-power FM. And in the, our equipment budget, we're looking to spend $30,000. And that is so that we can move the antenna that will now be at town hall and our transmitter and move it to a different site that has elevation and has an antenna already in place, or I should say a tower already in place for our antenna, so that the FM frequency can be town-wide. We, there are places in town that have, the land has the elevation and has unused police towers that are sufficient to carry our antenna. But we would have to build a very small structure. When I say very small, I'm saying a glorified closet, five by five feet, weatherproof to store some equipment. And that's what that $30,000 reflects in the equipment and my budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, everything else in this budget is fairly similar to last year.
Yeah, just to make sure I understand, for office equipment, you did add $30,000 for low-power FM, but overall, budget-wise, office equipment actually went down 10,000?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make, you know, we throw comments around that we're adding $30,000, and I want the public to understand it, you know, net sum is actually a decrease in the budget through the media department. So one, I congratulate you on that. Thank you very much. But I want to make sure the public understands we're just not throwing an extra $30,000 into the budget.
Absolutely, and I should have been more explicit with that as well. So thanks for bringing that to everyone.
So this may be out of line, but I'm just going to put it out there so people, you guys can think about this. We're getting ready to build a new antenna and a structure to house the equipment for police and fire communication. Can we piggyback another antenna on there? Just to think about it.
If you want to. I really, I think Chief will answer the question. Or respond.
So we, I just had a project meeting today, so that's something I'll definitely address with them to make sure they add, the ability to add a FM transmitter antenna on the tower. So that would be an option.
Because I mean, if it hits all those areas in town and it's nice and high, just a thought.
We can definitely explore that.
You can, what's that, Chief? Sorry.
We can explore that.
Oh, okay.
Definitely explore that. You know, the antenna has to be in a specific location, and it has to be out of range from any other interference, other FM antennas. But that's something that I can work with the chief on, and when we go to file that application, we can talk about it for sure.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but at least people look at it.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
Nicholas, I just, just review for me, this addition of a low-power FM to your department is not going to change your personnel requirements at all? You folks are going to be able to handle whatever additional loading work effort and stuff like that is concerned?
We're up for that challenge for sure.
Okay. Do you expect not to have a problem with that?
I don't expect to. I really don't.
All right. I don't know how much it takes to run that. I mean, I guess you're probably going to automatically program it and have it run by itself for the most part unless something comes up.
They're going to have volunteer DJs.
Yeah, right.
They're going to talk to you about hosting.
There's a slot for the seven counselors.
Shoot, rotating, I hope. All right, thank you.
No problem.
We have podcasts going.
We all set?
Thank you.
So the next one up is community development, and I just want to bring forward. Yes, community development.
Oh, you know what? I'm looking at your schedule that you've given us, and I'm not looking at it.
It's different than the pre-agenda.
Sorry. Community development, and Robert Price is the new community development director. And then the planner is Casey Wolf Smith is joining him tonight. Casey comes back to the town of Merrimack. She was formerly an employee of the town, left and then came back to take on this role. Robert vacated when he became director. This is Robert's first budget with the town of Merrimack, so he's going to get that bronze. But he's here.
We'll be gentle.
He's here tonight to talk about it. And, you know, the big expense in Robert's budget is the 10-year plan. And he can elaborate a little bit more on that. Robert, take it away.
Great to be presenting my first budget to everyone and have such a massive increase in it, so wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. As Paul alluded to, we do have a bit of an increase in our budget this year. It is because the master plan is due. The current plan was approved by the council in 2013, so it is about 10, going into 11 years old at this point. So we have a line in there, an increase of about $151,000 to accommodate that cost. Overall, community development budget is up roughly $176,000. Again, the big hit being the master plan of that, with most of the rest of that being the required increases for insurance and things along those lines. I do have some other small increases. One of them being our office supplies, excuse me, office equipment. I'd like to hopefully replace two desks for staff in our office that are currently falling apart. They are particle board construction. They are, I think, well in excess of 10 years old. One of them is actually a salvage desk from DPW administration, which was better than the one that it replaced. But both are very tired at this point. And with leftover funds, if we have to get some new chairs, which same along the lines, they're elder chairs and they're starting to age out. Outside of that, the rest of it is essentially leveled to last year with some slight increases for some, you know, fuel for the vehicle and maintenance for the town vehicle that we drive, things along those lines.
Do you have any questions, comments?
So the master plan is something that we pay for in one.
The master plan is something we pay for in one shot? Is 150 the whole two- or three-year project, or is that just this year of the project?
So the figure I was given was estimate $150,000 that would cover the cost of the plan. I would like, if we can talk to Paul about that too, maybe going forward for the next version of the plan after this, maybe putting a little bit aside each time instead of a one-hit at once. I can't really speak to how it was done before.
Is this a one-year program though to develop the master plan?
It roughly takes, the one I've ever done before is about a two-year process. So it would, in theory, kick off next fiscal year and then take about two years to go through the whole process with the public hearings, the devising of the plan with the planning board, getting it adopted.
But so is the 150 to pay for the whole thing?
Yes.
Or just this year's worth?
The whole thing.
And you fund it upfront, or do we split it in two years?
We funded all upfront. We did that with the last time we did the master plan. We funded it all upfront, the full amount. Because you got to let the contract out.
And the contracts were close to 150 or something?
It will be when we, well, we have.
I mean, there's got to be some cost in there that you're incurring outside of the contract.
We, our estimates from, the people who have done, the consultants who have done it in the past told us that 150 should be good to get the master plan created and moved forward with all the public hearings and every, all the meetings that they have to do. And that's in the presentations to both the planning board and then the town council afterwards. So, yeah, we've done this, last time we did it, I think, I think I was sitting in the, as an interim town manager at the time when we started in 2011, and it was one full swoop of the money was done in one year. Because as the contract gets let out, we have the money set aside for it.
Okay, I guess I had thought we either had a capital reserve fund for it, or we.
We don't.
We split it over multiple years in order to only do 50,000 or 60,000 a year for three years or something like that.
No, we, I'll go back and double-check, but I remember just, you know, it was paid out in full once the contract came through. No, we, uh, I, I'll go back and double check, but I remember just, you know, it was paid out in full, once the contract came through. And I think, like, like Robert said, that this might be a, a good use of a capital expenditure fund to put money aside each year so that we're not getting a big blip in, in the rate. Now, with that being said, this hundred and fifty isn't really moving forward because we had a hundred and fifty from DPW to do a sprinkler project. Not irrigation. Fire suppression sprinklers was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. So this money, the hundred and fifty is for this. So it isn't an increase of overall on it. It's just moved from one department to the next. But I do understand what you're saying and I'll, and we should look at that. And honestly, I think that this would, not this year, but maybe the following year, we should think about definitely putting on a capital expenditure fund for, uh, for the master plan because we know it's 10 years and we can set aside 10 to fifteen thousand dollars. It, it helps going forward.
Would you mind, Robert, explaining what the master plan is? Because I'm sure we have folks out there that are sitting here listening to this conversation going, what the heck they talking about?
Sure. So the master plan under state law is basically the all-encompassing guiding document that kind of guides the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, site plan regulations, all of those regulatory powers that the planning board has and the town's trying to administer. In theory, the, the vision and all the chapters that are in it, transportation, housing, energy, all of those things will guide those processes. So after this gets done, we could potentially look at a, you know, re, take a significant dive into the zoning ordinance and say, okay, well, maybe these aren't, you know, meshing with what the town wants to see as uses in these areas, or where they want to guide development, or how things work and got to get things lined up more in sync.
Anything from anybody? Said?
Not much else to talk about.
Yeah, no, very good. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you for being gentle.
Not many scars.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have communications. This is number five. Tonight, the chief and deputy chief will be presenting the communications.
Good evening. Thank you for having me once again. As in years past, I'll just go through some of the changes in this budget. Certain lines, and if you guys have any questions that I'll afterwards, feel free to ask. Besides me is Deputy Chief Matt Tarleton for the public. So, starting with communications, if we skip over to line item zero five eight three zero zero, you'll notice there's a five hundred dollar increase from last year. We're finding that the dispatcher training opportunities are not being hosted in this area at all. So we've been sending people to Maine and Vermont for training opportunities, so I just wanted a little extra money for lodging there. And the only other change is at eight three three five, the system upgrade agreement and annual preventive maintenance and security upgrade services. That's a fee that we pay to the city of Nashua for being on the system. And the, the exact number is not out yet, however, it was anticipated a 15% increase.
And you're paying that to the city of Nashua for what?
For it, so part of the agreement with Rola Rola, they have the, the system serviced every year and the upgrades every year. So that's we, so they pay our portion and we pay them back. That was part of the agreement that we entered into.
That's part of the eight hundred megahertz system?
Correct.
Okay, which comes out of communications.
Correct.
Okay.
You good?
So, um, on line for eighty-two oh three, line eighty-nine, portable radio, uh, batteries for portable radios. What are communications using the portable radios for? Is that like within the building, or?
No, this is, so that's replacement batteries for all of our radios that the officers are issued. So the portable
Comes under communications.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Which is why I asked about the eight hundred megahertz.
Yeah, cause, okay.
The dispatchers aren't using that directly, but.
Correct. This is for batteries replacement for the portables.
And under eighty-two sixty, line one oh five, it's the radio voting system, phone lines?
Yeah, that's something that's been in the budget for years. It's, um, it's essentially the communication that we have for our voting system, which is part of our VHF radio system.
Okay.
So basically it finds the best signal and talks to all of the sites and broadcasts from the site that's best suited.
Okay.
And that's the communication of telephone lines that we need to make sure.
So voting is not voting?
It is. That's, that's, yeah, no, no, that's a term.
I'm like, are we hooking up those machines and I don't know that?
No, no, that's a term used for the VHS system when we upgraded probably 15 years ago, we went to a voted system as opposed to having two sites.
Yep.
Now it just searches for the best signal to broadcast and optimizes communication.
Great, thank you.
Good. All right, Chief, we'll move up to number four, police.
All right. So one of the significant changes you'll see is eight one zero six, animal control. Previously, our animal control officer has been part-time. However, we've had a real struggle to fill that position because it's part-time. And we also had a struggle filling other positions such as crossing guards. So we're looking to make it a dual role where the animal patrol would be full-time, but also have other responsibilities as we see fit. To essentially fill in those voids where we, if we have someone that we need to fill for crossing guard, they can have that post and, and work that post. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to get some more suited, suitable candidates by having it full-time.
We have, uh, with this animal control position, I think the last three candidates that we have offered the job to have washed out in the background process. So it's very difficult to get a person in, first of all, who wants the part-time hours, but second of all, getting them to the finish line and seeing a need that, um, the chiefs are a need that, uh, with our crossing guards right now, that we do at the schools. And we do have one down at the end of Turkey Hill, that, um, what he has been doing with those positions is filling it with overtime. So by looking at filling it with, instead of filling with overtime, this person would be a regular employee and he could say, all right, you have to be at XYZ to do crossing guard duty for the day. Is this, is this a group one or group two situation? Group one, they're, they're on the, the regular. Okay, because I know it's They're not police. Yeah, they're not, they're not a group two employee. Okay. Because they're not a sworn, well, they're not a, they're not a certified police officer. Which gets me to the next question. What, I mean, what, what kind of background check is really, I mean, but is it an elaborate background check, or we just getting that quality of candidate? We're getting that quality of candidate. We're talking
I mean, it's not a full-blown, like
No, and, and I, I can't get into detail, but one of them was being interviewed and they did something and the police officer was interviewing during the background check, "Did you just do that?" And the person said, "No," and it's like, "I saw you on camera doing it." You know, while, while he was out taking another call. So those are the kind of quality of people that we've been getting with the position. So the chief felt that to get the quality of person that we need. And, and here's the other thing, without an animal control officer, if there's an animal call, we're taking a patrolman now to handle that call.
Sure.
And, and taking them away from their sector or their, 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 what the main focus might be for a policeman versus somebody chasing a fox that we'll never catch because by the time we get out to it, the fox is long gone. So. Okay, so, so it's not, it's not the background check that we would use for a patrol.
Correct. We are getting the applications. I mean, every time you post it, probably have maybe two or three, and then we're lucky if one calls back. You know, the last candidate we thought was going to work out, but it just something that she did.
That's because it's been part-time.
I think so. I think so.
I think that probably plays into it a fair amount, so. Okay.
Anything else on animal control?
So you're going to have an animal control officer full-time, but he's going to spend part-time, he, she is going to spend part-time doing crossing guard duties?
We'll be changing the job description to reflect the ability for me to, or, or my daughter needs to dictate what the responsibilities that she's going, they're going to be performing. Such as if we have a need for crossing guard, then they're going to be at the school, you know, at seven in the morning doing the crossing guard at Thorntons Ferry School.
And as long as there's no animal calls at that point in time?
Right. The fortunate thing about animal calls is most, most times they can be, they can be referred to later. You know, unless it's something really going on, and in which case, if there was an animal call that was, that was a severe nature that had to be addressed right away, a patrol officer would take care of it.
Okay, interesting.
We'll move down to eight two zero three. On the line item ammunition firearm repairs, rain supplies, taser cartridges. You'll see that that's a significant increase from prior year. That's because we were able to spend, buy the ammo at the tail end of the, the previous fiscal year. So I need to put that money back into the budget to ensure that we have enough money for ammunition. And ammunition also, uh, went up about 30%. So we were able to use cost savings from two previous, the last fiscal year to buy ammo for this year. So I'm just restoring that money back in the budget, so it's in there for the year.
Now, if you could say that again for me.
So if you, if you look at last year's budget.
Right. Last year, when we're looking at last year's budget, we afforded the opportunity to buy two years and have a significant savings. So we bought the two years and when we were doing the project last year, we took the ammo out. What the chief is asking is that we put the money back in for this budget. That we got a purchase. replenishing a cash supply for, which didn't make sense, but it's for purchases going back.
Next fiscal year, yes, correct. And small changes, um, increase the canine officer, calling uniform allowance to reflect the comfort dog hanging on the handle as well, so that their unions allowed a hundred dollars per vest to the units and the canine unit also has a hundred dollars additional clothing allowance. And ballistic vests and uniforms, um, that's just, we go by a cycle of every five years. And we're up for 13 vests next year. And that is also a 50% match by the federal government because we apply for the bulletproof vest brand.
Thank you for that.
And then if we move to eight two seven zero, um, so my changes in fees and dues, a child is missing, went up fifty dollars. Leads online, uh, is reflected to be the correct payment per year. The additional thing is MSAB, M-S-A-B. That's our forensic digital software. So basically if we need to, uh, download a phone's contents or a computer's contents, that's the program we use and that's a yearly fee that we have to have. It's, it's critical in our work nowadays that we have the ability to do this. We still rely on larger agencies that have, uh, more expansive programs and modules, uh, that we can use and hopefully down the road, we'll be getting something like that here in town because as you can know, everything's based on our phones now. So that's why we have to have that software. And then schedule anywhere is our scheduling software and that increased slightly.
So your forensic software license, you use that frequently? I realize you have to have it, but does it get used?
Quite a bit. Uh, pretty much every case is now connected to someone's cellphone. Whether it's drugs, thefts, um, you know, location services on people's phones. And just so the public knows that, you know, we have to apply for a search warrant to be granted access to do this. But almost every major case has a cellphone component.
And just out of curiosity, is there 10 cases a year, 20 cases, 52? I mean, any, any round number?
We had two today.
Two today?
It's multiple times during the week. I don't, I wish I could have the exact number, but it's multiple times per week. Oh, yeah, yeah.
More than one a week?
Yep. He was busy.
Yeah, but there might not be one more this month. I mean, you know.
And then moving on to eight four six zero. Uh, physical psychological exams, drug tests. Our psychologists increased their fees by a hundred and fifty dollars. So I just multiply it by four, because we had four openings, it increased by six hundred dollars. And I'd like to put out to the public as well, uh, we do get reimbursement through the state up to five hundred dollars. So that is coming back into the town that we do apply for every time we do a psychological. And then you'll see an increase in canine insurance. Uh, that's simply an increase because the dogs are getting older. As we know, insurance goes up. And that's all I have in the police budget that were changes. If you guys have any other questions about any other line items, feel free.
I, I, Barbara, go ahead.
So, you were talking about ballistic vests. Does Dre want to?
I know the old dog used to, I'm not sure. I can find out for you.
Just wondering if we needed to figure out how to get Dre a
Yeah.
A vest.
I can inquire.
At your open house, I watched the two dogs in action and, um, Mac was just laying on his back on the pavement. I'm going, it was perfect. That's what, he did a great job.
No, that's, that's been a really successful program for us. And I'm really happy with the way Officer Groves and Mac is working it out for us, so.
Yep, perfect. Um, I, I know, I know you've been giving a heads up, but that wasn't going to be my question actually tonight. But I, I've chatted with Paul, but I've bounced it off Paul that, uh, our cruisers don't last a long time at all. And, um, there's other vehicles that seem to have longevity that's much greater than what we've been picking up for cruisers. And so I, I didn't know if we should start looking outside. Does any, do you know of any departments that, um, do venture away from American-built cars, um, because most of them are built elsewhere anyhow?
So we did demo a couple of cars, um, this past year, the, the Dodge, uh, the Chevy Tahoe. Those are pretty much Dodge Chevys and Fords are pretty much the only ones in the police world. We are looking at, you know, exploring other possibilities. But when we, once we switch over to a different line of cars, then cost, the cost increased because now nothing fits in the car. The cages don't. Um, the, the Dodges were, people enjoy those quite a bit. Uh, however, they're doing a new engine design, so we don't want to be the first to get the, the new engine, so. But that could be coming down the road.
Because I just, the, the life of them is so short. It's, it, it's boggling my mind. I, and so it's not that I desire to go out elsewhere. I just know that American cars are produced elsewhere as well. I mean, it's just a lot of components that are coming in, so they keep it in American, which is what I advocate for, isn't necessarily the end game, but, um.
Correct. They also do wear a lot harder than normal cars, right?
Oh, no, no, I know that, but I just, I mean, in, in general, just, you know, there's some cars that definitely last longer than others without, with minor repairs being necessary, just PM mostly. So I didn't know if any other departments did it, but.
And just so the public knows, we get full use out of our cars. You know, once the cars come off the patrol line, they get cycled through our detective division, our admin divisions. And then eventually, sometimes they even hand it off to other departments in town, uh, for their use as well. So we do get full life all these cars.
Okay, since I guess I did start, I just, I picked my memory again. Are we going to the, uh, I don't even know what you call it, this, the, uh, the subdued markings, are we going back to our old markings for our new cruisers?
It depends. Ghost shadow?
Ghost shadow?
They're fully marked cruisers, yeah. I can tell you, we're not getting any other truck, though.
No, I, I appreciate that. I, I know that would never happen again as long as I'm about. I knew that.
No, the next three cars, I, I will be most likely all marked units. Well, all, all traditional markings. We did change the style of our markings. Making, we got all black, but still fully marked, all color. So we only have one traffic car and that's used by SIU, Special Investigation Unit, that's, that's unmarked. And then every other vehicle that we have for patrol functions is marked.
Yeah, but are you asking about the black and white versus the black and dark gray?
Doesn't necessarily, I want to, I want people to know, when they look at it, they know it's a cruiser. The, uh, the pickup truck, the first time I ever saw it go by, it was the faint lettering. I, I think it just said police. I don't even know if it said Merrimack.
No, but it's, it's marked up exactly like every other vehicle. Just has that silver, the, the shadowing letter, the reflective lettering.
What is the purpose of that? The shadowing?
Honestly, what's for?
What is the sh, purpose of the shadowing? I mean, the rationale is, there must be a reason why you have that as compared to the regular marking. I'm just curious.
Right, for traffic enforcement, it increases our numbers of traffic enforcement. So basically, it's not, it's not a black and white car. It's not hidden. It's a fully marked vehicle and actually is more discernible at night than the other cars because it has that reflective lettering. But for traffic enforcement, it's not the black and white doors where you see the white doors coming. Um, so that's why.
So you're saying it's more effective with the traffic?
More effective for traffic force, I ask, absolutely. Absolutely. And I know, you know, Chairman, Chairman Rothaus, I understand your feelings. I, I, I really, I, I really think that we do need to have some aspect of our police fleet be unmarked so we can do effective traffic enforcement to make sure that we keep the community safe from motor vehicle accidents and stuff like that.
Okay.
Particularly with ways. People can, the application ways for directions, they they market. Plug in, plug in.
Cause I'm okay.
You know, the on the traffic apps, you know, the the directional apps now that you can fill in where all the traffic stops are, where the cops are sitting, so.
And if you're doing that while you're driving, you probably ought to get stopped for distracted driving.
That's a job of the co-pilot.
And that's the benefit of having, you know, more low profile cars.
All right, um, did that answer the question?
I I wanted to go back to.
Andy, I.
Andy.
Seems how we're on the the conversation of vehicles, eighty-five oh three. Significant decrease in that budget went from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and thirty-five per vehicles.
Yeah, so our cycle of vehicles are three, three, four, so last year was four vehicles.
So this is the natural cycle to go down to three, okay, thank you.
But but you had asked for a hundred and seventy?
That was so correct, we've been trying to replace an admin vehicle, a sole brand new admin vehicle um that would be used for administration. The last time we had a a bought brand new vehicle for admin, it was the Ford five hundred, it was gold in color. And that lasted us fifteen years, so, but ultimately, um, some cuts had to be made. I think that the patrol division should have the newer vehicles.
And admin is.
Administration, sorry, so.
Administration is your level or it's?
Yes, correct.
So he's not getting a new car?
But so he can have one of the ones that they take out of service from.
Correct.
Regular patrol. Um, going back to the question on the um animal control officer and the school crossing. I saw that the uh, let me find it again, the budget for the school crossing or other part-time was reduced by almost seven thousand.
Correct, that would be reflective of if we are able to fill a position or for granted this position, then it's assuming that this animal control officer would be doing some of those responsibilities.
Okay, that wasn't what you requested, but that was a reduction that town manager again put in.
The the this all transpired within like the last week of budget planning, so it was it was it was it was right up against the wall, so.
So I mean, because you went up from twenty twenty-eight to forty, almost forty-one for this animal control officer, not counting insurance and other expenses. And you went down seven in the in the other part-time.
Correct, I think we can't cut out all the hours, but a reduction in hours, some of the town manager and I spoke about for like the line item for crossing guards.
And was there an an increase for this person going to health insurance and stuff like that?
Yeah, there there was some additional for health insurance in New Hampshire retirement since they weren't on it. But conversation that I had with the chief, it wasn't just the cut in the uh in the crossing guard line item, there was also a reduction in a little bit in his overtime line item because they are filling these shifts with police officers if they don't have anybody to do them. So it was almost a um in his budget, when we talked, he came back and was a neutral budget to add this person in as a full-time person. He reduced other areas as well to get to when we had this conversation so that for the full-time, because he felt that it was a need of his department was to get a full-time person in.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing else, Steve, did you have anything further, Chief?
No.
We all good then? Which is revenue two.
Which is where?
Revenue two tab.
It's all the way in the back of the book. Um, please, uh.
Outside detail.
On the uh, just before revenues.
Huh? Oh, you're looking at.
Yeah, just before revenues in the book, um, on the spreadsheet.
See other special revenue.
Other special revenue, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, basically, uh, this is for our police officers do outside detail um on certain roads, uh, fifty-seven hundred hours, and we do a calculation and finance of an average, taking into account everybody who can do the outside details down from um lieutenants all the way down to patrolmen and we add in a five percent administration charge on top of it, including health insurance, not health insurance, sorry, um, New Hampshire retirement and workers comp when we calculate that rate. So it's a cost neutral to the town that's picked up by the person who's doing the outside detail.
And you're effectively level funding it from last year?
Correct. Correct.
Not expecting any variation in detail requirements up or down?
The the big detail requirement is Red Fest. Um, that uh, that that's one of the big detail requirements because they have a lot of police office, but over the years, they have reduced the number of patrolmen on that, so. And we felt the fifty-seven hundred hours because we just don't know what um the highway expansion is going to bring.
Okay, because we went up almost, what, eighty, ninety thousand for last year's budget? And keeping it even this year.
Right.
And and we're thinking maybe the highway efforts are gonna increase the requirements.
For for the fifty-seven hundred hours, we were a little, we didn't have fifty-seven hundred hours last year in detail, so that's what we kept the same.
Just look at the table.
Thank you.
Barbara.
Are we still doing uh detail elbow?
Yes, we are.
So that's included in here as well?
That would be, yes, and the outside detail, that is paid by a third party.
I'm not sure, they did, they did reduce the hours, so.
All right, good. All right.
Night, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Get out of here quick.
Another group unscathed.
I don't know about unscathed, but they got out of here.
All right, and general government, item one, tab one. Night.
Night, guys.
So in general government, you'll notice that um there is a new position in the um eighty-one oh four line item uh for an assistant technology communication person. Um, some of the duties, a reason why we're looking at this position is that uh right now, the current environment with the two individuals in our IT department are doing about a hundred and forty um, what we call tickets, um, service calls, requests for IT. Um, the current workload of tickets, uh, that doesn't include any projects that work that's being done in addition to those tickets. Um, an IT ticket could be as simple as, hey, I can't get on my computer. Um, the uh, I forgot my password, can you reset it? Two more complicated as um are my computer or my police cruiser uh tablet is not connecting to the Verizon, what's, we need to work on those. In addition, uh, the workload is to include projects, does not include projects. The average project portfolio is about fourteen per period. Um, and when when I say per period, it's it's over a number of months. Um, some of the projects such as the um billing uh for our code enforcement division going electronically to do permits electronically, that's a project that they'd be working on in addition to any of the other issues that that come up during the day. Um, for instance, today, this morning, um, one of the first things when we got in the morning, our outlook wasn't working. So they have to drop everything that they were planning on doing and and fix the outlook and and figure out why outlook wasn't working and it was because of a I guess we must had a power glitch last night or our uh reboot that didn't fully reboot all the way, so. But, you know, items like that, it takes time to go through and and try to figure out what's wrong. In addition, uh, the current environment um has been upgraded and uh many, many of the projects require a continued standardization of the current environment. Um, we had a IT coordinator years past that uh kept the town afloat. Um, Jonathan, now that he's there, is not only keeping the town afloat, but making sure that we have the proper equipment and standardization of it and making sure that um when we do do an upgrade, that we're 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 not just basically making sure that uh everything is functioning properly and all our security and back backups and things of that sort are occurring with this with these items. Uh, Jonathan also has taken a more involved role, Jonathan is the IT coordinator, he's taken more involved role with some other projects such as um, you'll see tomorrow night, he'll be presenting at the council for um, some upgrades to the dispatch equipment and the the servers and things of that sort. So he's looking for somebody who has that kind of networking experience as well that can help him when they do do upgrades to servers right now. Um, in addition, um, you know, we're we're moving into, we're spending a lot of money on this eight hundred megahertz system. And uh, if we have a problem or we need our, one of our radios programmed, we have to go out and say to Nash, what could you program this radio for us? Um, and sometimes that takes days, sometimes it takes a couple of weeks. If we have this position, um, they would be responsible to upgrading our radios if there's an upgrade to our radios. Um, you know, the we're looking at body cameras in in for the police department, if that comes in, you know, there's gonna be issues with body cameras. We'll need the additional person to help with the body cameras. Um, you know, telemetry at at wastewater, it's all cellular, it's all communication based. Need, you know, if one of those things go down and having just Jonathan and another person, if they're working on a project and the other person is busy with trying to figure out why outlook isn't working and then there's a a dialer issue at oh, my fire alarm system, now this other person has to go out, drop everything, and when they come back, they're sitting there a couple, you know, an hour, two hours and have to pick the pieces up and start testing and and some of these projects. So that's really, uh, you know, why I why I was looking at it, uh, the sheer number of of calls and the way the department has changed since we have hired Jonathan for the better. Jonathan gets involved where in the past, if I was gonna upgrade my systems such as the code enforcement online permitting software, um, the department would be left out to its um, to do all that work. Now Jonathan's getting involved in the beginning with the project to make sure what the specifications are, what the equipment, computer needs are gonna be and and working through the program. So by having his department fully involved in some of these projects, it's it's taking up a lot more time than what it did in the past, with the way things used to run. Um, I have a perfect example. I was responsible for the finance software when we went to time clocks, it was on me. There was no IT involvement. I set the program up, I was talking to computer professionals on the other end saying, what do you really mean by doing this? And they'd ask questions and I stumbled through it and we'd set it up and look at it. Now, if if we were setting up the time clock system again, Jonathan would be right there next to the finance person setting these time clocks up, using this stuff, uh, working, working on some of these other issues that come up with it um, going forward. Uh, that's really the new position, um, you know, it's more, it's the communications upgrade is requiring more time for support. Um, and uh, this project has taken about three to ten tickets per week, just in this upgrade. So, um, and looking at the budget, I try to be as 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 tight to the line as possible. I was looking at what positions does the town really need? This position is a need for the town. Um, I have other positions that in a perfect world, I'd love to include, but I felt that this position was the most needed to for the town to keep the operations. And as you know, we're spending a lot of money on technology. And for technology not to work properly or to be held up because we don't have the right people in the department to help us, that that's, we shouldn't have the technology at all, but we are spending a lot of money on technology. So that's, this is one of my most important positions in the budget and that's why I put it forward this year. Um, knowing that uh, you know, this is what we need and I think the timing will be perfect because we're moving to the eight hundred system, hopefully by the time July turns around, we'll have our tower built or in the process of being built and then we can uh hit the ground running with it. Um, some other um items that went up in general government are compensated absences. That's just, as you know from years past, compensated absences is the, it's an accounting rule that I have to follow that basically says, excuse me, this person's retirement eligible, now you gotta account for their retirement eligible on the books. So, um, and that sixty thousand dollars, we have a number of people hitting that uh eligibility to retire in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Um, office supplies went up sixty-five hundred dollars. Um, and that's basically uh general government uh for computer toner, paper, you know, miscellaneous staples, things of that sort, it's a cost, a cost, a cost going up. Paper costs are going up, uh, and we're talking with general government, that includes all finance, all of um, all of my general, my office in general government as well as the IT department. So it's uh, the increase is is around sixty-five hundred dollars there.
That's. It's a big jump.
It's a big jump, but if you look at years past.
I mean, actuals.
We were, we were actuals or.
Yeah, but that had to be something.
Ten, you know, nine.
That had to be something, right, big.
So that begs the question, if you were, if you were only budgeted eighty-five hundred two years ago and we spent twenty-one thousand?
I could find out, I didn't go back two years to figure out what they spent on on office supplies.
Just curious.
But I, but go on, and and there are also some other items with the office supplies that we do is if if we replace a printer, because it's under a thousand dollars, that's an office supply. I don't run it through the computer line item or the equipment line item. So that could be also part of it is that we bought some printers or things of that sort in there, but I I could find out why. We always spent it. Yeah, um, you know, um, legal litigation of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, I am hoping that the involvement with legal counsel.
Don't curse yourself.
I said, I'm hoping that involvement with legal counsel. Um, but we rely on them for a lot of different things. You know, we have some very good experts and to have these very good experts for the town, working for the town and environmental and and personnel, they cost a little bit of money and plus they're going up on their rates as well. So that's really just to keep us afloat with what uh for for increases for legal. Computer supplies. Um, and uh, computer supplies are going up. Uh, basically, the big ones that are going up is the finance software, um, is going up about six thousand dollars. Um, virtual town hall, which is the website, they're changing us over to Drupal ten, don't ask me what Drupal ten is, but they're changing us over to Drupal ten and that's uh by changing us over to this Drupal package that we have no say in the matter, it's an automatic upgrade, they're they're raising their prices four thousand dollars. Um, and then Office three sixty-five security, this is our uh, us uh, MFA. Um, and that's going up a little bit, three thousand dollars. And then finally, the uh, just personal service, files, computers, things of that sort, uh, monitors, um, just in general, going up about fifty-five hundred dollars for that increase. Um, and then um, looking at uh outside services going up about thirteen thousand dollars. Um, that's really between a couple of different items. Um, it's, we we use a smart safe system in town and I'll leave it at that uh for finance and the cost for having that smart safe system with a pickup, uh, armored guard pickup and is going up thirty-five hundred dollars. And then um, our uh contractual maintenance for ambulance billing is going up about three thousand dollars. So that's the increase in that line item. And then finally, not to bore people anymore, um, national transit went up thirty, almost thirty-five thousand dollars. We will not be talking about national transit tonight, Pat Murphy is the one who handles that uh for me in the the town, our welfare administrator. Um, however, it is in general government, not in her budget, so, but she has all the details and that's really, national transit is so that people elderly, elderly people who do not have rides to and from hospital, doctor's appointments, uh, going out, getting food for, you know, shopping for food, uh, things of that sort, that is what that national transit is for. Um, that is our main priority, our second priority is if people need to use it to go back and forth to work if there is availability of hours, that's the secondary prop um property on that, for for national transit, so all that happened is that uh So all that happened is that uh Pat will be able to talk about total number of ridership and things of that sort. She has all those information for us. Um and then finally, um elections going up eighty five thousand dollars. We talked about eighty thousand dollars of that is for uh the voting machines. And then we have an extra election, which is five thousand dollars. So the reason why that's going up that significant is because the voting machines is in that budget line item.
So we're gonna keep it there. You you're not buying voting machines.
That is an item that we, you remember, this is twenty four and twenty five, so this is eighteen months out. When we started it, so it's in there, it got brought forward. As we get closer, we can look at that and potentially if we don't, we we pull that out of, we could, we have a potential to say eighty thousand dollars worth of savings there.
Which is one and a half cents.
Right. And then um.
Maybe Patty.
Yeah, right, so. That's all that I have. I'll be more than willing to answer any questions.
So we'll hear about the transportation from Pat.
Correct. And we'll talk about that, I believe, next Thursday, a week from tomorrow. Let me bring that back.
So going back up to dues and fees, which is eighty two seventy, uh line one twenty eight. The NHMA, are we still getting our money's worth for twenty seven thousand dollars?
Um right now, we're getting our money's worth because there are over four hundred bills up in Concord. And I do not have time to track every bill that's related to a municipality. And if the legislation goes through about lobbyists, then we'll have to look at that line item. Um but right now, we are getting our money just in the keeping us informed of what bills are out there and. And what uh what they what they mean to a municipality and how they all affect municipality. So yes, I'd say we are.
Okay, and for eighty four sixty, line two forty nine, public relations.
Yes.
Which went up.
Right.
What are they doing?
That those are, those are flowers for uh.
Oh.
Agree, you know.
Okay, all of those.
All that stuff, plaques, plaques went up, I mean plaques almost tripled in cost. Just to have, you know, those, the plaques that we give out to to a vendor who's. You know, gives us a lot of donations or even to our employees, those plaques, it's it's. The company that used to do it got sold and now they're going a per letter pricing on a plaque. So it's, it's, they tripled.
So now we're just gonna say thanks and leave. She rocked off her sheet and handed to him.
Yeah, we're gonna just take a piece of wood and just staple a sheet of paper to it.
Guys are brutal.
And and uh what's on to other?
Other is just. I mean. It it's a catchall for miscellaneous. Other could be um right now, you know, if I have a vehicle. That I need to go someplace and it's it's not related to a department or it's one of my staff that needs to drive to. To something if we have to, you know, basically pay for gas or things of that sort, that's in that other.
So Paul, education and training, eighty three fifty two, line one seventy one. Two years ago, the twenty two, twenty three budget, we spent a thousand five hundred dollars. And yet we're we're budgeting thirteen six fifty. Are we actually spending that money or?
Well, there's a couple of things that happened that year.
Okay.
Um first of all, we, in this education training budget, we have seventy five hundred dollars for. All non-union employees to use college courses, to go get college or master's degree courses. In two thousand twenty two, twenty three, we had nobody take that program, up us on that program. So we've been budgeting that for years, seventy five hundred dollars.
But they just didn't, you just didn't use it.
Use it, we didn't use it, so it it dropped. Um and then the other thing is that um a lot, the finance department, the finance director, the assist, the deputy director of finance. In twenty two, twenty three, they uh they didn't really use it to go to training. As you know, the finance director was getting ready to retire. So he didn't feel right going to training that he'd never used and the deputy director was learning her job. So she didn't go to training on that. And then the other one is the technology coordinator. There was twenty five hundred dollars for for seminars and things and with um. Him getting up to speed with our platforms and everything, he didn't really use that. He has since uh. Used some of that money in this year. Um this summer, he went to a uh a conference in Florida. So we are starting to reuse some of that money. And that's why it's really, we flatlined it from uh from last year to this year and then we'll just take another peek at it as as time goes on and. In the next budget cycle, if we can reduce it all. Some years, we use up all our education money for college courses in the first quarter. Other years, it it sits there because we don't have other people, but uh we have some people that will be going to class. Um that I know of. Um we're talking to a couple of people that if they want to go to class and they'd be using some of that seventy five hundred dollars to go take those classes.
Is it possible to to retain any more actuals than just one year in this spreadsheet? I think we asked this last year and.
Um if you go to the, I know on the, on the, when you're looking at it on the. The computer, it only gives you one year, but if you go, there's a file in there that actually will show you. The that from two thousand twenty, twenty one forward um actuals. And there's another spreadsheet in that, I don't know what it's called, but I know that we did give that in the uh in the files with it.
It's just not convenient having to.
I I unders, I understand, I understand, but you know.
Cause we could just, in the spreadsheet, we could make them disappear.
Yeah, yeah.
To be able to print it.
We we can look at that going forward. It's it's, it's not that difficult when we start doing our our budget sheets. You know, to keep a couple, to keep a year in there or two years in there, but we're trying to get it all on an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper too.
I know, but that's why I'm saying you can hide those when you're going to print, but. But it'd be nice to be able to un, to expand those, to see them when you're looking at it on the computer anyway and.
So actual in twenty twenty one was uh sixty nine hundred.
Right, we don't need to go through that detail right now, Paul, I'm just.
But it was like, yeah, they're there in this other section.
In what other sheet was that?
Um Adam, do you know the name of that, what what the name and convention you use for the um for the.
Budget summary documents?
No.
No, cause that's smaller.
I I'm sorry, I I I don't. Actually, you know what?
When I see a TC budget final, a budget summary, a copy of draft CIP and a copy of town manager draft. Budget final.
Yes, it's um, it's a PDF, actually.
A PDF?
Yeah.
Look at the one who's finding it.
Uploaded budget draft report twenty four, twenty five.
That's, yeah.
Wow, your computers. Of all the people.
Last one with a flip phone of all you guys.
What kind of laptop do you have? Because mine's kind of slow.
Actually.
No, uh but that's, it's there.
So that goes back to twenty twenty one.
Right, so you get some comparison.
So you get three actuals, yeah.
And and on that sheet, we also, this year, we used to give you four actuals. But because we put in a um through the requests of last year when we were looking at this, the council asked for percent increase. As well, so that took up a column on the paper. So we could only give you three years actual.
All right, well, I still think you could leave it in the spreadsheet and just hide the columns.
We will definitely take that under advisement. Yep, we'll keep it under, we'll take that under advisement and change it next year.
Thank you.
It took me three years to get the uh freeze pain or whatever, so it's in all the time now, I'm thrilled.
I'm so impressed.
All right, Andy, you had something.
Um going back up to uh A one forty two, we talked about compensated.
How about now? All right, we'll use this.
Try a different one.
Uh compensated uh uh absences. We had a sixty thousand dollar increase. I I'm curious, last year we only budgeted fifty five thousand, but actuals were a hundred and sixteen. So if this is a formula, how how are we off so much last year, actuals versus budget?
Well, the year before that, we had a lot of people that hit retirement eligible and they, people left or didn't leave. And that's why it was a hundred and sixteen actual. We budgeted fifty five in this current fiscal year because. Of eight, we have age requirements on our re, national, New Hampshire retirement system. Um twenty and forty or for twenty and forty five for fire and police. Or twenty five and fifty for fire and police, depending on the date they're hired. And anybody sixty years old or thirty years of service for group one or sixty five years old, depending on when they were hired. So we have to do calculations based on that and figure out who's coming into the program. Right now, it's um. This this year, what happened on the compensated absences this budget year is I have four people from group one, which is the. The workers, so to speak, other than police and fire are eligible to be retired. And I have three police and fire off people who are eligible to retire um through the retirement system. And then we usually use about ten, ten turnover, ten people leaving the the town employment. So that's where we come up with the hundred and fifteen thousand versus the fifty five in the current year budget. In the current year budget, I think I had maybe one or two people that were gonna be eligible to retire.
Which was the fifty five thousand.
With the fifty five thousand. The year before that, the hundred and sixteen is an actual people who left. The town of Merrimack and we probably have that already been budgeted in prior years. They just left and coming through.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's one of those accounting. Issues that we have to, because of retirement and we have to present it as an actual expense if they're eligible to retire. And to get them into a balance sheet account.
So if they do retire.
Yeah.
Their money's there.
The money is set aside for them.
Well, if they don't, the money just stays.
This stays there, yes.
But this, this money is is um paid vacation time and stuff like that?
Yeah, paid vacation, sick.
But we budget for the entire year for these people. If they retire early, we've already budgeted their salary for that entire year, right?
We 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 have, but we are hoping that we can replace them as soon as possible after they retire.
Uh huh.
As soon as possible is 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 the key. It's with that, you're right.
But the chances of doing that are pretty slim, but that's what our our goal is.
Our goal was is is if somebody gives us. Depending on on the individual department or the person in the apartment. You know, for instance, um if a department head's leaving, I would hope they would give us thirty days. We're probably not gonna fill a department head within thirty days unless there's an internal candidate.
But account wise.
But account wise, we have to, we have to plan on that, that position will be filled because I don't. I really don't know when people are retiring or not retiring unless they come up before the budget season says, Paul, I'm retiring on X Y Z date. And then, you know, we can budget for it, but most of the time.
With that much notice, you could plan on hiring somebody else, but.
Exactly.
When you get two weeks' notice or something like that.
Right, when they get two weeks' notice, it's 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 a quick turnaround and, you know. I want to let the people in Merrimack know that we do an extensive background check of everybody that comes into work for the town of Merrimack. We check driving records, we take criminal history, we check reference, we actually check references. And if they do not, if the references don't get back to us, Sharon in her department actually contact the references again and say. Hey, we're waiting for your reference because we want to see what kind of employees we're getting here, working on the town. What kind of employees are driving our vehicles, what kind of employees, you know, do they have a criminal past and and you know, we walk away from someone. We don't get a proper background check that's sufficient for our needs, but that sometimes takes a couple of weeks to do. And then, you know, you got. You got some union contracts that say how you gotta post a job. And that might take a couple of weeks for union posting and outside posting. We try to run them concurrently, but you do a two-week posting, get the applicants in. Get them in, hi- hire a person, he has to give, he or she has to give their notice. If they're not unemployed, they have to give their notice. So you're right, uh Councilor Koenig, it it's sometimes, it's great if I can get them in as soon as somebody leaves, but there usually is a little bit of delay there, but. I. I don't want to be brat. Brass crude about this is I don't have a crystal ball who's leaving and who isn't in what positions. So that I could say, okay, I'm going to short X Y Z position, six weeks of salary. You know, so we do, we do, but when I do do my, well, the way I used to do it and the way I taught. My per, my Tom and way Tom taught Adam, when we look at doing a salary. Is that we actually, if somebody isn't gonna get steps or somebody's gonna move up a position. Um you know, for like police, they get steps in their contract. We're not just going to the highest step they'll give for that year and say, all right, he's gonna be at step thirty, say, so to speak, thirty month step. And take that and throw that in as a full year. We actually count the number of months that they'll be in each step in the position. And do an average of what their salary will be. So we're trying to narrow down those issues where there's extra money in the salary dollars, but there is gonna be some because. Um like I said, it's it's around, it's around the four to potentially up to six or even longer for some of the vacancies that we do have. Okay.
I I appreciate that you try to work out the steps and things like that. I mean, rather than just saying a flat number for the entire year. That's great. Thank you.
And if we do know a police or fireman are are resigning. Um we'll do is we'll do calculations because. A senior master patrolman retiring and we're gonna get a patrolman in, the cost is a lot different, so we actually have done this in the past as well. Is if we do know one of our senior detect, you know, upper, upper management people are leaving with the backfill. We look at what the savings could be in in those salary dollars as well.
Okay, thank you.
You go, I'm going back a long time ago during a budget committee years. Um school district, you had, I believe, if I recall correctly, they have to notify the school district by a certain date that they're gonna be retiring.
And I believe that's because they used, and I don't know, I don't know what the contract is anymore, but they used to give five people. A buyout.
That's why they had to do it.
And they had to do it, so you had to get your name on a list that you're retiring at the end of the school year. You don't need a contract. And then they would go down and say, okay, you're eligible. Are you gonna retire? No, okay, the next guy. And they take the five who are eligible. To go out and and the only reason I know that is way back when, when I was in. Middle school over here where Jay Muse was, is Mr. Bashan was my basketball coach and my, one of my teachers. And I saw him down the road and he says, oh yeah, I got, I got lucky, my my name got drawn for. Being one of the five who can retire to get this extra bonus when when he's eligible. So that's why I think they have to get their names. I don't know that for a fact, but I believe that was it.
From a long time ago.
Yeah, they they used, and I don't know if it's in the contract anymore. That's.
Yeah.
Their negotiations down there with their teachers.
So on eighty one forty three, the next one down.
Yep.
We currently have, last year we budgeted fifty five thousand, we only spent seventeen hundred. And then we're budgeting fifty five thousand again.
That one's a little different because what I use that line for is that if I have to bring in um. I had it, like, you'll see in twenty four, uh tax collector, if you go to tax collector, they they're increased about thirteen thousand dollars in the budget itself. Well, if I have to give a raise out during the year to keep an employee or bring an employee in, that's where that money comes from and we just don't move it. From that line item out to to the department head, but I use that money to offer people and know if I have to. For instance, if I have to bring my DPW director in at two thousand dollars more that's in the budget, that's where that money comes from. Or if I have an employee, we do a, we do a survey and we have, like our town court tax collectors, we found out they were, it was a revolving door. Why is it a revolving door? Because we weren't paying, you know, a prevailing wage according to other communities. That's where that money would come from to give them those raises. So while it shows only seventeen hundred spent, actually more money is spent in. Because of how it is broken out in other departments. Because we don't transfer the the budget.
So the actuals are showing up on the other department tabs, but you have the budget sitting here on this tab.
For that, so that it.
Got it.
So that I don't overspend.
Yep, and then last question, for the education expense that we talked about earlier, is there. If someone signs up for education, is there any kind of commitment to the town? Or do we just pay for their education and that's the end of it?
The only education commitment that we have, Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, is for our paramedic program. Over in the fire department. Everything else is, there's no commitment to the town. That's the only one you have to sign an agreement with, that if you leave within two years, you'd pay us back a percentage. And the great, there is a grade, there are grade requirements in our education. You can't get a C minus. In um in a course and get reimbursed for it. You have to have, you know, Bs or better.
But we could potentially be paying for someone to go get a master's degree and the day after they graduate, they go find another job.
Potentially, yes.
Is there a reason why it's only for that one program and not, not for the others?
Um. Legally, our. Legally, our legal counsel has advised us to having those kind of contracts because they, uh, then in turn, turn into a, uh. An employment agreement.
Which means what?
It means that, um. If I'm, uh, if, if I sign up saying that, all right, I'll repay you. If I leave early, I have to repay you in a year, it's kind of telling the employee that they got a job for a year. Whereas if you want to take them out of the budget. I got a job for a year, you gotta pay me for the year. So it kind of is an appointment contract. With them, that's what our legal advice has been.
But legal.
Legal advice has been. Is that they, they.
It'll be one year.
Remember that.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it actually has a, uh, you, you're signing an employment contract with the employee. And that's what our legal advice has been in the past. And the only reason why we're allowed to do with the, the paramedics is because we, we don't want them to leave once they get it. So we want them to stay.
Yeah, I, I guess. I mean, that's not the way they do it in the corporate world and nobody in the corporate world worries about an employment contract.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
I have, I come from the corporate world too and.
Even the army gets two for one back.
Yeah, so.
Paul, you just said you don't want them to leave, so you do it with them, so how is it okay to do it with them, but not everyone else?
Yeah, exactly.
Because the paramedic program is, is, is an intense. Expense for the town versus potentially giving seventeen hundred dollars for an employee to take a master's class. Versus ten to fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to go become a paramedic in one year. And we just don't, that because what will happen with the paramedics is they'll go to paramedic school. And then another community will come in and swoop them up on Merrimack's dime and they'll take them off.
Police, police departments do that, I know for the academy, if you leave early, you have to pay back. That percentage of the pro rated portion, I guess.
Do we have that?
No.
We, we, we should have that.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't have that. Um, so.
Hi, Nancy.
Thank you, and I wonder if we just couldn't rewrite whatever it is that we're asking somebody to sign. I mean, I, I get it that there's a legal issue and, and I'm sure the attorneys know far more than we're, we could probably anticipate. But I would think that there would be a way to have that, a, a, an agreement. That if I'm taking money for education. At the time, I'm employed currently and I'm getting granted this scholarship basically for a class. Should I, whether you remain employed or not, if you don't. I, I don't see why we, there couldn't be a stipulation in whatever they're agreeing to, that. Um, they would be responsible to pay back, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't be saying. You guaranteed a job for the next year just because you said, just, but.
I, I could, I could, I'm going to be with her tomorrow, so I can talk to her tomorrow again about it.
If you, if we terminate you, I can appreciate you're not going to pay it back, that I understand, but. Um, if you just choose on your own to leave, I, I.
We've had, you know, we, we, he, he, here's the other thing. Is that, um.
Yeah.
See, I've, where I've worked. We've never, it's, it was considered a benefit. We didn't, I, I've never had to sign anything. Tuition, you had to be able to make sure it got approved, it was appropriate for what you were going for. You had to get a grade, that kind of thing. But I never had to sign anything saying, okay, you've given me tuition, therefore I'm going to promise to stay, I've never.
Right.
Had that.
No, it's, it's, yeah, it's just a benefit and, and honestly, it's, it's. If it's used properly, it actually benefits the town of Merrimack for the people to go and get their advanced degrees.
Theoretically, as long as it's appropriate, I mean, you're not going to be able to get.
Well, that's the other thing to me.
As long, as long as they stay in Merrimack, right? The minute we pay for the degree and they go to another.
But that's, but happened with.
But they've been working while they're working for that degree, it's not like they're going to get the degree in one semester and, and then leave and we're going to. Um, do we have a limit on the number of classes they can apply for at any given semester or year or?
It's, as long as the money's there, they can apply and, and it's on a first come, first come serve basis. If somebody wants to take three, uh, three classes at two thousand dollars a pop, that's six thousand dollars. Then keep working full time, they, they can do it and, and it, you know, I only have fifteen hundred dollars for the rest of the year.
Does the topic get approved based upon applicability to you, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. You know, you can't, um, you can't have somebody in finance go for a criminal justice degree.
Right. Or, yeah, I mean, there's court courses.
Yeah, yeah, what, yes.
After a certain amount of time, it's clear.
And you pay all the way up to like a masters or more? Or does it matter?
Masters degree, they, if they want to go for their PhD, they can go for a PhD. Um, I haven't had anybody in my tenure go for a PhD. I had a couple of patrolmen that went to law school and, and, you know. Um, but they never got there, they, they, they didn't go fully till all the way through to get their law degree. Um, but, um, you know, it, it has to be related to your job, it can't be, uh, I'm going to become a chef. Or, um, you know, I'm going to be electrician if, if you don't deal with electrical issues.
And I, I can, you know, as far as repayment, there's certain things like the paramedics will like, uh, the, um. State, uh, the police, uh, academy. Uh, those things are, they're, they are intensive as you had suggested earlier and it's, it's a big chunk of cash upfront for a short, you know. A three or four month period for the academy, paying that back makes better sense.
Let me talk to the chief because. I don't know. I don't know, let me talk about the, the police academy because I don't, I don't, I don't have an answer for you whether or not we pay or not. I know we send people up there, but I haven't. I haven't, in my finance, when I was finance director, I never saw an invoice come off that I had to pay the police academy for it. So let me talk to the chief and see if. I, eighteen years as, as finance, I've never seen, I never saw, saw. Well, we sent a lot of people up there, I have never seen an invoice saying, pay the police academy X Y Z because you're sending three people up there, it's. Can they get in the academy and, and there you go, let me talk to the police chief and I'll have an answer for you at the next meeting, whether we pay for the academy or not. I know there was talk that we had to start paying for it, but I don't know if we have ever had.
Not very good.
Paul, is, is there anyone you know of that you've paid for their degree and they've left like right afterward or no?
Not in the last ten, fifteen years that are not, not non-union, not, not in the, not in union individuals. I know there was a, um. An individual in the police department that got his master's degree and graduated and two months later he gave his notice. But, uh, he was in a police union, he was in the union, so. But not in my non-union, nobody has left right after they got their degrees. Matter of fact, the people who got their degrees have stayed. You know, um, uh, the deputy finance director got a degree through the town of Merrimack in accounting and, and she has stayed. Um, the deputy town clerk tax collector got a degree through the town of Merrimack and, and has stayed. Um, we have an individual, our health officer got her public health. Yeah, I don't remember what master's degree program she got, but she has stayed in two, two years now with it. So it's not a lot of people leaving with it.
Well, and you're limited to seventy-five hundred dollars a year and they're, they're not getting their degree in one semester, they're, they're. It's spread out over a period of time if they're working towards a degree.
Right.
And taking, I mean, if they're working full time, they're probably only working one class and. Around their schedule.
Right.
I mean, it's not like they're going full time to school for a, a year or two and getting a master's degree and then able to leave. I mean, it's just physically not possible.
And, and it's, it's really like Nancy said, sometimes it's a benefit. And to a person who might be looking to come to the town of Merrimack and, and go get their degree in X Y Z and. See that as a benefit that they, but they, they have, they can't be like, I can't just hire you tomorrow and you can sign up for a college course. They have to be through probation, they have to be a, a full-time employee before they can actually start taking classes.
Right, it might be, I might be, I might have been perceiving it more of an issue than it is. Cause when you sit there and think about what you've said and it's going around, it might be a non-issue.
How long is, uh, how long is like the probationary period?
Depends on the employee. Um, non-union is six months, but it can be extended. And that has happened in the past where we have extended non-union.
And the rest is contractual.
The rest is contractual.
Right, we go there? We've beaten that to death, it went a little, uh. Okay, uh, then the last thing is revenues, Paul?
Sure.
Speaking of revenues, look, you do have from two thousand eighteen.
What, oh, you're looking at the.
I'm looking at the revenues and it has two, the actuals from two thousand eighteen.
Which, which revenue sheet would we be looking at, Paul?
Um, it would be underneath, um. Uh, the budget underneath the tab that says revenue, um.
Is that what you're saying?
It's, uh, revenue, it just says revenue. That's the one I'm looking at, just revenue.
The, right before general government?
Yeah, uh, right before general government, that's the, that's the tab I will be looking, talking about.
And we must have a whole bunch of hidden columns here, because all I see is why.
See now, so I'm looking at this and I'm not trying to do a hard time here. But I totally agree with you, Tom, I think it really does make a difference when you get a sense of what's happened. I don't think it has to go back to two thousand eighteen, but certainly more than two years. If we can do it here, we should be able to do it on the other ones without a problem.
We can, but you also got to remember that, um. Yes. There isn't a department budget, a town manager's budget, a, a council budget, it just says budget for revenue. Cause technically, we go over revenues because we look at the tax rate when we're setting our. Our, our budget. But, uh, the only thing that the voters vote on is the appropriation side of the house.
Did we ever used to do more than just two years?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I think there was too, I agree with you in the past, maybe it's a distant past.
No, not even, because I've been on since two thousand eighteen and I had seen more years than just one.
You're sure?
I've done it for eighteen years and I took over from Bob LaVanne and these are Bob LaVanne spreadsheets and that's how he told me. Actual for the past year and then the previous year that's been audited, budget, but in the department and town manager.
Seems like we used to see two or three actuals.
Well, that's because when you looked at this, in the book, you saw a summary page, which is that summary document that actually shows it. Going back to, for every, for other years. I will try to put other years in going forward.
Okay.
Next year.
Yes.
Because you do have room.
Yes, there are ways that we can do this.
Well, the problem I think is when they go to print it. If, you know.
But it'll be no, but it will be no different than this revenue page. You're talking about the same amount of room on the page.
Some, some of the, some of the information, general government gives a lot of information, if you look at some of the stuff in, in the, the book itself. We try to go back and say what it was budgeted for in the previous year, well, come on, where is it? Oh, would help if I'm in the right here. There we go, like we do, yeah.
I'm going to do some investigation.
Yes, I, I will try, but I, I have never put more in the Excel spreadsheets, I've never put more than one year of actuals. In my tenure.
Which has been that tenure, my tenure.
Yeah, but like, we, we, there, there are ways, we're going to have to massage it to get those extra years in there, but I'm sure we can do it for next year.
All right.
That's a deal, okay? Meantime, I'm going to look at previous budget books, because I swear.
You gave them all to me already, so you can't.
But if I found one, what price do I get?
You have to call me out.
Eating crow, who's going to eat crow? Okay.
Only if it's barbecue.
So, I, uh, revenue two, which is this one. Um, so going through the revenues, we, we looked at, uh, significant revenue of. Some of the administration charges for that we charged, like wastewater, um. Police admin, media, outside detail day camp, uh, they went up in, in wastewater a little bit and, uh.
Auto registration.
And auto, and then auto registrations, we, we looked at, um, if I keep going down, interest we flatlined at a million dollars. Um.
At least we get some.
Well, we're only looking to use surplus right now of nine hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred. Which is the amount, uh, from previous years that we've put into offset tax rate. Items, the other amounts that, uh, you'll kind of see like last year, current year we're in has two, two million four eighty-four five hundred. Um, one point four million dollars is for the gas pumps down at highway and then, uh, an extra hundred thousand dollars we put into offset taxes. Uh, so we brought that back down to nine eighty-four five hundred. Uh, increased ambulance revenue to a million eighty thousand. Um, I'd like to really talk to the council when fire comes in here about increasing our Medicare. Right now, we do Medicare plus fifty, um, I would like to think about doing Medicare plus seventy-five or re- Medicare.
And have other towns.
We are the low, I, I will bring in documentation from, uh, from it, we are very much lowered by thousands of dollars. On our, uh, BLS and ALS from other communities.
And I, it's conversation for another night, but it, we'll have the conversation.
I'd like to bring it in and so we can discuss it, but we are one of the lower, lower ones here, our, our neighbors just to the north of us. We charge about, say fifteen hundred dollars for a simple BLS call, twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Right, you have to accept the Medicare rate, so what do that buy you?
Medicare rate is if you have regular health insurance though, not Medicare, you pay the, you pay the freight, you pay the difference.
There is no balance billing in the state of New Hampshire.
For Medicare.
Medicaid, and that's, you can't, that's what we accept.
No balance billing for Medicaid.
But we don't bill for, we don't bill for Medicare though, the extra. I don't think, we can talk about it, it's not important for tonight, we'll, uh. We'll cross that bridge at that.
But I, 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 I think. You know, and I'm not trying to, to hurt people with it. And we do have a robust process where we go through and offer abatements and write offs and, you know.
Pat deals with that.
Pat deals with that and, and to be quite honest with you. If I don't sign three to five a week, just writing off balances, we don't sign anything. And there are certain age groups that. It's an automatic, we don't even ask, it's just automatic, we don't, we don't go after them for it. So we, we do have a robust program of that sort, you got to remember. Oh, and I, I, I'm trying to get the data and I wish I had it for tonight with this because I didn't know we were going to go this deep into it. How many Merrimack residents get transported versus how many out of town residents get transported as well? And that'd be interesting to look at.
Is it significant?
I don't know, I really don't know, but, you know. Seeing some of the court filings that I have to sign to say, yes, bring that person to court. There's Nashville, there's Manchester, there's other communities involved as well. So I, I really, I would like to see what our numbers are. Um, with in and out.
Get some data.
Yeah.
Okay, um, are you looking at the revenue two?
I'm looking at revenue, just the revenue tab.
Okay. Cause on revenue two, I did have a question.
All right, go ahead on revenue two.
In lieu of taxes, is that like the FAA?
No, that's the college.
The more, Thomas, what about, um, what about the FAA, they don't pay anything to the town?
They pay sewer.
That's it.
No property tax?
No, they, and payment in lieu of taxes, they don't have to pay taxes like nonprofits.
Right.
I don't involve them, but I.
Tom, the only payment in lieu of taxes we have is, is Thomas More College.
Okay.
Throw those feds out.
Well. All right. Have we ever asked for something from them?
The feds?
Yeah, the FAA.
They got money.
They, they pay their sewer fee bill, tax, that's all.
Something wrong with that.
Okay.
So, um, but, uh, that, that's there, um, so going down, like I said, um, hold on. Um. The, the other one that went down in revenue is the federal grant for the safer grant. Went down two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars because February of twenty twenty-five, um, we're done with the grant. Went down two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, because February of twenty twenty-five, um, we're done with the grant.
Sorry.
Um, just bear with me. I don't have a mouse either. Uh, building permits reduced by twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we felt that uh, at this time, that seems reasonable. Um, because of what was going on with mortgage rates and interest rates and things of that sort, we felt that there would be a slowdown a little bit in not building. A lot of the bigger projects are uh, are, mixed-use projects, which were a lot of the building permits. Now they, with the moratorium that we put on that, we figured that would also affect us about twenty-five thousand dollars. Alright, um, the other one is um, the, the big one, there's one, a couple more big ones here. That, that's really it for revenues.
Um, what, what, did you say something about other revenue? Buildings and grounds, one ten?
Building and grounds, other revenue.
One ten in the revenue tab, it's, it's got a fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand dollar variance. Of course I can't.
Building and grounds you're checking, bro?
Yeah, it's line one ten, other revenue, buildings and grounds. This year's budget has sixty-eight eight thousand, sixty-eight point eight thousand, and drops down, back down to seventeen.
Right, yeah. It's been lower than previous years.
Yeah, I'm just curious what's, what's going on this coming year, or this current year.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to check on that. I don't know why that number was where it is. Seventeen four is what uh, we get from the court for the parking lot, and that's what's there.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Um, I'm trying to go back and see.
From what?
The court.
The court grid.
Ah, okay, gotcha. Set a percent?
No, it's a flat fee. It's a flat fee, and every couple of years I go in there and ask for more money. And, you know, they wanna, they really, they really want me to prove that it's costing me more money to.
To maintain the parking lot and all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah. So, and um, now, their individual who's their maintenance guy over there does a lot of the uh, you know, snowblowing and making sure that their area is cleaned and things of that sort, so. They're taking care of their sidewalk, and he's also clearing some of the parking spots with his snow blower. So they really want to see what's going on with it. It might be, might be time that I, you know, shake the cage a little bit and, ask for a couple more bucks from them, but uh, we have to do that in October. There's a, in the, in the contract we sign with them, it's every October, we can look at that.
Good.
Um, I'm just going real quick to see if I can find out what's going on.
Who's the billboard?
Billboard is um, seventy-five hundred dollars. That's ten thousand dollars now. And that's uh.
That's the one by the post office, right?
Yes.
It was supposed to disappear. I, I remember the conversation, when the lease was up, that was never supposed to be renewed again. Of course, there's a new set of, selectmen in the day.
That uh, that billboard is in.
Revenue though.
It's revenue, it's in revenue, it's ten thousand.
Oh, yeah, you didn't have to.
It's a building rental, um, fine thirty. It should be, it's ten thousand dollars.
The restaurant license is on line seventy-two. Boy, that's a big increase. We got that many new restaurants up there?
We know, but remember you did um, you, you increased the fees. We increased the fees. We, we increased the fees to actually do what our ordinance says does, is that we charge the same as what the state of New Hampshire will charge.
Right.
Yep.
I'm not sure I ever looked at revenue so specifically before.
And don't forget, you get another bite of revenues back in, next time in September. So this is only an estimate of, of where we are in September. We'll have a better, understanding of where we might be um, with the revenues. Um, as uh, because we have to follow the MS four thirty-four in September, which is part of the tax rate setting. So in April, the residents vote on the appropriation, or the, the numerator, part of the numerator. Um, of the, the equation of the tax rate. So you have, uh, the numerator is your appropriations minus revenue divided by your value. So it's part of the numerator.
And you're holding, you're holding auto registrations flat this year?
Yeah, only because of the additional apartments that are coming into town.
Lot of new.
Lot of new registrations. However, there's been an uptick that I've seen, and maybe it's because of Christmas, but there's been an uptick of uh, temporary plates in the parking lot. But we do, we still get a lot of people that have moved in and they've been in their apartment for nine months and their registration's going, from Massachusetts or another community, and they come in and they are registering. So we are on pace through the first five months of the month to actually hit these numbers again. So.
A lot of dogs and no marriages.
Um, which is, we, we changed, we were getting a lot of marriage licenses, but Diane changed. A marriage license takes between anywhere from thirty to forty-five minutes to fill out. And what was happening is we were getting a lot of people that weren't from the town of Merrimack, coming in and applying for a marriage license during COVID and after COVID, and there was a lot of barriers that were occurring. Um, to case in point, uh, they had a couple in there and the question was, have you ever been divorced? And the woman said, not in this country. Doesn't matter. You know, you gotta prove to us that you're divorced. So, you know, we stopped taking out-of-town basically, marriage licenses, because they do take up a lot of time, there's a lot.
Why do they bother coming here?
Because it was uh, it wasn't, we didn't have a lot of requirements. We have the same requirements as what a marriage license you need for a marriage license. It's just other communities were saying, okay, you need to make an appointment to get your marriage license, and Merrimack was, you just walk in the door.
Cause it's better than Vegas.
So, you know, so we, we've, we've kind of ti- tightened that up a little bit.
And that's why there's less marriage licenses.
No more walk-ins.
We still do walk-ins, but we, we make sure that, you know. Most, most, most town clerks in their town can do a marriage license, and you just need to send them back to their town of residents.
Yep.
Alright. Okay. This one, we're all set?
Good.
Yeah, that was fun.
So, alright, if there's nothing further? You're welcome.
All set.
Need a motion?
That worked.
Motion by Barbara, seconded by.
Second.
Tom Pena. All this is favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Saying seven zero zero.
See it's.
Thank you, buddy.